Okay, good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, December 1st, 2025. My name is Ron Schneider. I will be chairing the meeting tonight. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Delight and Science, and as a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. The following meeting will be available through the video on the main portion of our website. As the meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that. Now, done. Now, per instruction from the state fire marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there's an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. And I would ask everyone who's able to scan for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let us go right into board introductions and let's start to my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnacker, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Adele Coughlin.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Hello, Jackie Gilfis.
Good evening, Eric Eldridge.
Good evening, Colin Wazell, Town Manager.
Good. All right. Let's start with approving minutes. Regular meeting minutes for November 17th, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the regular session meeting minutes for November 17th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? We carry's 5-0-0.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes for November 17th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain, I was not there.
Oh, sorry, abstain. So I have, that carries 4-0-1. Okay, citizens in business time. Anyone who wishes to address the Select Board or matters of public interest? None. We can move right into item number four.
I would be delighted to, Mr. Chair. As we've all heard, we are expecting some snow tomorrow. The totals have been changing all day, but I think it's safe to say we'll see somewhere between three and six inches of snow during the day tomorrow and into Wednesday. A reminder for those that are traveling during the storm to take it slow and not crowd the plow, and just remember that the roads may be slick. Ahead of the storm, we've closed the yard waste drop-off site, which is traditionally closed, we've posted it that it's closed in November. We leave it open until the first snow. As with previous years, when the snow clears, if weather permits, and the ground is solid enough, we'll reopen that. We've also closed Riverfront Park. It's impossible to plow that driveway, so we just get ahead of it. But similarly, when the nice weather returns, we will reopen it. I hope that everyone had a chance this weekend to stop by the Annual Festival of Trees in the town center. As always, the program was bigger and better than ever and is a tremendous display of the pride and sense of community that we have here in Tingsboro. A big shout out to our Rec Director, Allison Page, and the Rec Committee, as well as the countless volunteers who make this event happen. The good news is that if you missed it this weekend, you have one more chance to participate. You can visit tingsbrowma.gov to view the full schedule for the final weekend. Two weeks ago, we hosted an incredible what's happening on the New Hampshire border at the Edge District at 440 Middlesex Road. We had over 120 attendees from the business sector across the region. Attendees enjoyed a tour of Metro Rock Climbing Gym, which will be opening soon, and had an exclusive gathering inside Player One. We're grateful to Player One for hosting us and Sam Park and his team for graciously sponsoring the event. We talked about the development that we're doing here in Tingsboro, ways we can support local businesses and help businesses start and grow in Tingsboro with a focus on Sam Park's project, obviously, which has been a great project for us, as well as the warehouse project that Marcus Partners engaged in right on Kendall Road. At the request of this board, we're meeting this week with Mast Dot to discuss traffic mitigation issues on Middlesex Road with a focus on the area between Locusts and the state line. Once we've had an initial conversation with the state, basically finding out what the state will or will not approve, we'll bring in the folks from Nature's Remedy and Yellow House so that we can foster a cooperative approach to reviewing and addressing the pending issues. Our surplus auction is now live at tingsbrowma.gov through our online auction service called Minus bid. We have 10 surplus items on sale, ranging from a full fire engine to utility trailers, air compressors, and more. The auction will be live until 4:00 PM on December 15th, and all items are available for public viewing anytime at the DPW Yard at 89 Kendall Road. The latest version of the bridge was released this weekend. As you all know, that's the new newsletter from the Tingsboro Public Library. You can find the digital copy online at tinglib.org, which is also where you can subscribe to have it e-delivered to your mailbox each month, or if you prefer, you can obtain a hard copy at the library. We are once again collecting old and unwanted holiday string lights right here at Town Hall. The bin is located outside of the main lobby, so it's accessible for residents 24/7. Residents should avoid putting these items in your curbside trash because they get tangled up and destroy the processing machines, both in the trash trucks and also at the dump. Last meeting, we had the Board of Assessors before you for the annual tax classification hearing, and during that meeting, I reminded the folks at home that you should reach out to the Assessors' Office to learn about any programs that you might qualify for in order to help reduce your tax liability. On that note, residents who fall into any of the following categories may qualify for real estate tax exemption: that's legally blind, a veteran with a service-connected disability, the surviving spouse of a disabled veteran, or a veteran who died from active-duty injury or illness. Senior citizens aged 65+ who meet certain income and asset requirements also qualify. Applications are available in the Assessors' Office and are due by April 1st, 2026. You can call the Assessors' Office today to learn if you qualify by dialing 978-649-2300, extension 121. And on that note, I do just want to note, The Lowell Sun published a story this weekend about the tax rate coming down. The tax rate came down slightly, assuming that number gets approved, but residential values increased. So if you read the Lowell, if you read the story without really reading the story, it sounds like we've promised a tax decrease, but the tax rate, which as Lauren Wolf, our Chief Excessor, explained, is the dollar amount per thousand you're assessed. That has come down slightly from this current fiscal year, but valuations have increased. So just the header of the story makes it sound like everyone's getting a tax decrease. The tax rate has decreased, not necessarily the bill that you will see from the Assessors' Office. Earlier this month, school business administrator Joe Messina notified the school committee of his plan to retire at the end of the school year. Joe has been an employee of the school district for 26 years and has been a tremendous partner of the town. I've said this before, but it's worth reiterating that we're very lucky to have a good relationship with the school district, and Joe has certainly been a big part of that. Working with Joe has been a real pleasure, and I just wanted to take a minute to give him a shout out for what is a well-deserved retirement. Joe is a walking encyclopedia, and his input has been incredibly helpful on things like capital planning, the budget, and much more. We will miss working with him, but he is certainly leaving the department in great shape for whoever comes after him. I believe he's staying on through the end of the current school year. Last week, we completed final round interviews for the Health Department's Administrative Assistant position. We interviewed four finalists, and I'm happy to share that not only we're all four uniquely qualified for the position, but all four are Tingsboro residents. We're working through the offer process right now with our preferred candidate, and I will update the board once we have an accepted offer. Two weeks ago, we completed the interview process for our vacant skilled labor position with the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works. We conducted five interviews and have identified our preferred candidate. We've completed the screening process and are now in the offer stage, and our goal is to have that candidate start before the holidays and hopefully before the first snowfall. I wrote this before I knew there was going to snow tomorrow.
Made a little sign next to them.
Yeah, our candidate will certainly not be starting before then. On a project note, I had a conversation last week with the folks that are involved in the proposed assisted living continuing care campus at 84 Kendall Road. They are still moving forward with the project as proposed to the town when the Select Board entered into that development agreement with them. They're currently working with a national company that does these types of projects and are engaged in a conversation with the folks at 93 Kendall to finalize agreements for sewer access. As a reminder, the project at 84 Kendall relies completely on being able to tie into the private sewer network that the folks at 93 Kendall are constructing. This side of town has no more sewer capacity, but what the folks at 93 Kendall did was obtain easements that allowed them to run a private system to our main feed on Middlesex Road, which goes over the bridge and into Drake it where there is capacity. So if they're able to come to an agreement, the parcel at 84 would connect to 93, which then runs through a bunch of different parcels to Middlesex Road and over the bridge to Drake it. That was the only feasible way for them to connect to sewer. They have not entered into a final agreement, but they do have an early blessing from the Sewer Commission, and I expect, you know, barring any surprises, they'll be able to make that connection. The Department of Public Works was recently awarded a $10,000 grant from our insurance Kari Amaya for various workplace safety items, including new protective gear, traffic cones, traffic signs, and other measures that will enhance job site safety. On top of getting the money to make these purchases, our participation in the program earns us credits toward our property and liability insurance, which ultimately reduces our annual premium. So a double win there. On the procurement side, last week, we awarded contracts for our on-call plumbing and electrical services. For the last few years, we've used a blanket on-call contract with fixed hourly rates and material markups to ensure that we get the best pricing and reliable consistent service. Prior to 2022, basically every department that managed a building would call their own plumber. One was paying twice what the other side was paying. There was no communication. Particularly under the DPW Act, now that we have a formalized facilities division, all of our service requests are coordinated by one person, and using these competitively procured contracts, we lock in rates for three years at a time. So we've awarded an electrical contract to Daigl Electrical Corp. That's been the holder of our current contract since 2022, and we awarded a contract to Vanguard Mechanical. That's a new firm to the town, but they come highly recommended from larger clients like UMass Lowell, Jersey Mike's, the Sub Shop, and we actually got better rates than we're currently paying. So the contracts are for a term of one year with the option at the sole discretion of the town to extend for two additional fiscal years, and the benefit again is that we've already locked in prices for those two optional years, so we've kind of protected ourselves from future inflation. Also, last week, we reviewed proposals from qualified firms to provide peer review services to our Conservation Commission. These services are paid for by applicants before the commission through an accounting mechanism called the 53G account, and similar processes exist for the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. We received two proposals. Unfortunately, one was rejected for being late. After reviewing the remaining proposal, we determined that it was advantageous. They met all of our minimum requirements and came highly recommended, so we'll be awarding a contract to the Horsley Witten Group effective January 1, 2026. Similarly, applicants before the commission benefit from the fact that we've now locked in three years of pricing, but again, this isn't money the town is spending. We collect a fee from applicants. Whatever we spend, we spend. Whatever we don't spend, we return to them along with a full accounting. And then finally, just a few upcoming events. Bingo is back this Wednesday, December 3 at the Center for Active Living. Doors open at 5:30 and the game starts promptly at 6:30. If you can't go this Wednesday, you can go again two weeks later on December 17th, but on December 31st, which is New Year's Eve, there will be no Bingo. The Tingsboro Public Library will host its annual holiday party on Monday, December 8 from 4:00 to 7:00 PM in the library, and for those of you that are musically inclined, you can join the Center for Active Living and the Council on Aging on December 10 to go Christmas caroling in the housing development behind the Center for Active Living. I will not be there because it would ruin the program, but if any of you can sing, I'd encourage you to participate. I think there's Christmas cookies afterwards as well, if that wasn't enough of a lull. And that is all that I have today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And we'll open up to the board for questions. Select Person Coughlin.
Yeah, can you just elaborate a little bit on what are the peer review services for the Conservation Committee? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Fantastic question. So whenever a project goes before the Conservation Commission, it typically includes sophisticated engineering plans, whether it's stormwater systems, studies on how it may impact a buffer zone or the wetlands ecosystem. We have, our Conservation Director is knowledgeable in these regulations, but isn't necessarily an engineer. So using these peer review services, if Jackie has applied to build a house and it requires a major stormwater permit, her engineering firm would give the town the plans that would show that it meets all of our regulations, the state and federal regulations, and instead of us just accepting that as accurate, we then take those plans, we give them to our independent peer review, who will go through and make sure that the plans are compliant with the bylaw, compliant with the Well and Protection Act and other federal regulations, basically double-checking the work of the applicant at the expense of the applicant. It's less common on conservation. A lot of times what you see before conservation are much more simple projects. It's incredibly common at the Planning Board level, the Zoning Board of Appeals level, and even actually, we did it in the Select Board for the special permit that was issued for Drake it water.
Thank you.
Of course.
Cohane.
No questions.
Person Gilfis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. About the 84 Kendall Road, if you could just remind me, when this went before the town to change the zoning, who was the owner of that land? Who was asking for us to make that change?
The owner of the land at the time was a trust managed by Colette Elkarah.
Okay.
Who's been a longtime landowner in town, a few different parcels.
So it was a trust, and is that the current owner?
Yes, as far as I know, there's not been a closing to a national vendor or somebody else who will develop it.
Okay, so that's sort of what I'm trying to figure out. So they are looking to sell to a national vendor who would really do all of this, facilitate it, make it happen?
And then manage the property once. Yes, that's my understanding. I would also suspect that it's the national developer that would be the one submitting the final plans before the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeal for any variances they may need.
I guess this is speculation, but I'm just curious why the trust asked, like, why did they facilitate us changing the zoning bylaw?
My-
They are not the ones that are building and running a care facility.
My guess, and this is just speculation, is that that was the, that was the most ideal way to market the parcel. So there are limited housing opportunities they could do on that land. That would be one profitable and likely seen favorable by the town. I think, if I remember correctly, when they came before this board to first broach the subject, they referenced sections of our master plan that talk about the need for specific types of housing around continuing care. So my guess is, by changing the zoning beforehand, it made the parcel more lucrative, is probably not the correct word, but more appealing to a potential developer. And certainly, I don't know if a potential developer had reached out to them first about it. I don't know the, but I think having the zoning in place, at the very least, expanded the opportunities that they could do on that site.
Yeah, I think I'm just like thinking back to what that conversation had been, and at least like my perception of it was that like these people were looking to build a continuing care facility. It didn't occur to me that, of course, I mean, now in hindsight it makes sense, but okay. In any case, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You.
Select Person Eldridge.
I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Messina. We knew that he was going to be retiring. Not a surprise, well deserved. It has been a pleasure working with Joe on capital asset for, I guess, the last five years. So, and I've known him before that, so I wish him well in his retirement, and it is absolutely well deserved.
Thank you. And I will piggyback off of your thoughts there. And Colin, I would say, if and when his successor is identified, be happy to invite them to attend one of our meetings, introduce themselves, and just us get to know them and make sure that we maintain this relationship with the, with the school, the school board.
Absolutely.
Thank you. No questions. Okay, Fire Station Building Committee update.
All right. The Fire Station Building Committee met on November 19th with the town's selected designer to review updates to the program and space use analysis. For those that aren't familiar, that is basically the foundation of what the design will be. It talks about how much space you need, what you need the space for, and the program talks about what you're going to be doing in the building, how much training will be done there. Does there need to be an emergency operations center? So once the designer understand, and these are all very specific, right, to Tingsboro, so once they've got that finalized, then they can move forward with the rest of the design. The committee has reviewed their first draft. Many of the committee members have already provided me feedback. They'll give their final feedback to the designer at its next meeting on Wednesday. Additionally, the committee was presented with two layout options for the site at their meeting on November 19th. One site option assumed a single-story building with an outbuilding. The second layout, the second layout assumed a two-story building with no outbuilding. In both options, all bays are drive-through. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the designers, their civil engineer, and our DPW superintendent to look at some tweaks to those site layouts. We strongly believe that we can connect that parcel to the Kendall Road parking lot. There's a lot of benefits to it. One, it would allow us to have isolated egress and ingress for emergency apparatus, whereas civilian vehicles could enter from, say, the Kendall Road parking lot. The parcels connect, so it would offer expanded parking. So we're meeting offline with them tomorrow to talk about how we make that happen. So I envision there'll be some part of that conversation at the Fire Station Building Committee meeting on Wednesday. We are in the early phases, obviously, but again, the committee was asked to provide feedback, and we'll talk more about it at their meeting on Wednesday. On a public outreach front, the Tingsboro Firefighters Association will host a small, family-oriented event at the station on Kendall Road during the Festival of Trees this Saturday, December 6. The purpose will really be to get people into the fire station and to give tours and talk about the needs of the fire department. Today, I filmed a segment with Tingsboro Media talking about the project, largely the background piece of it, why we're talking about it now, what the timeline looks like, how we pay for it, and specifically how we came up with using 250 Middlesex Road as the parcel. So I was outside in this beautiful weather for about an hour with Rony filming that. Chief Russell is meeting and filming with Tingsboro Media later this week to do a more technical-oriented video to talk about our challenges in the current station with the hot zones and the cold zones, and with some graphics that H2M will provide, show how that layout really works. And so our goal is really just to make sure that all the information is available to people. Again, I'd encourage folks to visit tingsbrowma.gov. The two site layout options that the committee reviewed are on the page, as is the program, as is the space use analysis, a bunch of different frequently asked questions. And at our meeting on Wednesday, one of the things we'll talk about is going to some of the community groups that regularly meet in town. Even though we don't have a number to present to folks yet, it's helpful for us to get an understanding of what people will want to know, what are some of the concerns, so that we can get ahead of it. Obviously, this board has made it clear that their goal is to have something on the town meeting warrant in May, so we've got a lot running in parallel, but I think that if people want the information, it's certainly widely out there, and if folks have specific questions and are uncomfortable coming to a meeting, I'm obviously happy to meet with anybody who has questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? No?
No questions. I think it's a great idea to review connecting to Kendall Road. That was one of the key benefits of that particular parcel, having two, two different entrances and entrances, entrances and exits was, was, I think, a huge benefit to be able to get over the biggest bottleneck in town, which of course is the Tingsboro Bridge. So good work there. Everybody just please keep looking at the information, asking questions, as Colin said. The goal here is to have this in front of Maytown meeting, and we want to answer all your questions way ahead of time. That's why we're starting so early. That's why we're having it on the agenda every single Select Board meeting to make sure that, you know, people get updates, and please, please ask questions. We want to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Person Gilfis?
Would you mind pulling up one of the layouts? It doesn't matter which one. I have a question about the property line. Look at that, so easy to pull up. That was a test. It was. So down at the bottom, where there's this jet-out-
Mm-hmm.
-that you're seeing there, that is part of the same parcel-
Mm-hmm.
-and it's owned by the town.
Correct.
Can you show me where the parking lot is?
Yeah, so the parking lot that we constructed is basically all in this envelope. We have an easement with the Bake Shop and what would have been Farwell House for the bottom part, which is off the layout here, but it's that small curve that then cuts to Kendall Road.
So the bakery and Farwell House and Cricket on the Hearth is that plot in the corner?
Yep.
And where does their land go to?
So in the back, it goes to this red line. The, the actual buildings are closer to Kendall Road this way, so you can't see it on this map. It cuts off.
Okay.
I can pull up a satellite view, though.
Yeah, maybe that's what's throwing me off. And then to the other side is the church, right?
Right. So, all right. So this is the part, this is the Winslow School parcel, and this is that square part that we saw on the map that's our property. This is all the property of Cricket on the Hearth, basically like around here, and then to this retaining wall. We have an easement for the portion that starts here and comes down here.
Okay.
It's an access easement that allows us unfettered access in and out to access our, our parking lot here.
Okay.
And then separately, of course, is the church, which is all of this property. There's no proposal to go through there or access that parking lot in any way.
Okay, thank you. This was really helpful.
Of course.
Do we anticipate that we need to get any further easement in order for that to be open enough to pass, for the fire trucks to pass through? It just looks so narrow right there.
It does look narrow. In, in an ideal scenario, we, we haven't even broached this with the designers, this access would simply be for civilian vehicles.
Yeah.
So one of the things that, that we prefer, and you can see it actually here in this layout, there is, this would be the driveway for fire apparatus to isolate emergency vehicles coming in and going, and this would be both off Middlesex Road, which I'm not a huge fan of, it would work, but I'm not a fan of, would be your civilian traffic, if you will. What we're envisioning is that you maintain this driveway for emergency access, emergency vehicle access, whether it's returning or going, and the driveway that you put back here, although it could be used by, say, a returning ambulance, would primarily be for your civilian, non-apparatus traffic.
Okay, so we're not anticipating full drive-through of the apparatus from Kendall into the bay?
It wouldn't be, it would work. The turning radiuses work. What would not happen, and what we would say would not happen for certain, is that you would not have fire trucks or ambulances leaving to go to an emergency call, flying through this parking lot. If anything, you may have the occasional ambulance returning this way, depending on where they're coming from, but this would largely be your civilian traffic.
That's very helpful, and I look forward to that being laid out that way, so that way residents can see it. There was something else about the building, and I don't know what it was, but it, nothing is urgent right now.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Select Person Eldridge?
I'm pleased with the progress. I think that things are moving. I know that the committee will be looking at all of these items. I do want to just make sure that what we're doing is taking a very similar approach to what we did with the school and that we're focusing in on what our needs are. There's going to be, and Colin dealt with this with the middle school and some of those, sometimes you sit there and go, oh, wow, we're doing all this, you know, put all these things in there. So I have complete confidence that the committee will be doing this, but just to reiterate that what we're going to be putting in will be what the town needs, and it's not going to be this, you know, opulent type of thing. So when we look at like sizing of, of training rooms and different things like that, this is a first conceptual take at those things. We'll be adjusting accordingly, but let's just make sure that everybody is, is aware that that's part of the process and that that's the type of feedback that people should be giving us on those. So I think it's, I have my thoughts on some of those, and I will probably go to the meetings and sit there and listen, but I think it's great that the progress is happening quickly. Residents, as Select Person Cohane said, let's get everybody engaged and aware of exactly what's going on, because it is very likely that we'll be ready for Maytown meeting, and I hope everybody else is as well.
Thank you. Yeah, and just to reiterate, by putting the things on the website, making the information available to everyone, we want to be as transparent as possible so that everybody is a, you know, well-educated voter by the time that the vote comes up in May. So thank you, and continue the good work. Okay, new business, senior tax work off appointments.
Do we have a visitor here?
Yep, he's on C. Item C, aid committee appointment. We can move that ahead of time.
Whichever you'd like.
At your leisure, Mr. Chair.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we go to item C?
Daniel, you can come on up.
Welcome.
Welcome.
We are pleased to inform you that Daniel O'Perre has submitted a letter of interest to serve on the Citizens Taxation Aid Committee. If appointed this evening, there are no remaining vacancies on this committee. A recent graduate of the Civic Leadership Academy, Mr. O'Perre has expressed a strong interest in contributing to the community and feels he understands the requirements of the Citizens Taxation Aid Committee and would be able to contribute.
Thank you. Have a seat.
Thank you.
All right. If you wouldn't mind- If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, telling us a little bit about you, we're, we're glad that you're here.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my names are Daniel O'Perre, and, um, I'm, uh, originally from Nairobi, Kenya, born and raised, and I came to the US 20 years ago. November 5th, I landed at Logan. I can't reme-, I can clearly remember that. Uh, well, I've been a resident of Tingsboro for the last 15 years, October 2010, and, uh, been around this area, Tingsboro, and Lowell, Drakehead, then I came to Tingsboro. Uh, currently, I stay in, uh, on, um, Three Village Lane in Tingsboro, and, uh, I'm a family, married, two kids, both adults, and I'm a graduate from UMass Lowell. Uh, class of twenty, twenty, twenty-three. I got my MBA from UMass Lowell, and I got my undergrad from UMass Lowell again in 2015, after taking multiple, multiple evening classes. My undergrad is in Business Administration, MBA in Business Administration. I currently work as a supervisor at, uh, Persimmon Technologies. We used to be on, um, uh, Portash Hill Road.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sure.
But, uh, we moved out of town. The company moved to Bedford as of last month.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good.
That's it.
And, um, I'll, I'll open up to the board in a minute, but, um, if you, if you don't wouldn't mind telling us what your interest in being on the Citizen Taxation Aid Committee?
Uh, well, I would say that, um, my interest would be to understand how taxation is done within small communities like, uh, Tingsboro, and how it affects the residents as well as the, and how it gets to be used or utilized within the town. I would, I would like to understand how that is done, and, uh, also, at least, I would say that it gives me an opportunity to, to understand better how it is done, because from my home area,
Yeah.
we never used to know. The money would just be collected, but will not, will not be told how it's used. So, with this opportunity, I think I'll be, I'll be more understanding. It will be a better opening for me to understand how it goes and also improve my, my educational step for everybody around my life.
That's great. Thank you. I, I'll open up to the board for if anybody has any questions. Select person Coughlin?
No, no questions at this time.
Cohane?
Uh, thank you very much for going through Civic Leadership, uh, and, uh, thanks for, um, you know, volunteering for this. You know, I, I do think the more people get involved, the more it'll help them understand, uh, how their government works. It's their government. Uh, it just helps everybody out, and, uh, you sound like you had a great background, and
Yeah.
Uh, I love your explanation of why you want to join, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir. Person Gilfis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Daniel, for bringing this opportunity before us, because I was not familiar with the Citizen Taxation Aid Committee, um, and so I've now read up on it, so thank you. Um, I am curious, and this is maybe less of a question for you and more for Colin. So, my understanding is we accept the applications. They're due March 1st and November 1st. It looks like the committee met March 26th to review the March 1st applications. So, I presume, have we reviewed the November 1st applications yet, or is Daniel going straight to work?
Daniel will be going straight to work.
That's good. I mean, better than waiting six months, right? So, that's good. Do you have a sense of how many applications we received now, or what, what's average?
I don't. The one thing I'll say is that these are all incredibly confidential, so I don't, I don't see the applications. It's handled by the assessors. The subcommittee reviews them. Um, while it isn't a large number, I will say that it is a meaningful number. And, and for those that aren't familiar, the fund that they use to cover the grants they give are through donations. If you ever look at your tax bill, there's an opportunity for you to donate, so it's not, we're not using municipal dollars to make this happen. It's donations from other taxpayers.
Well, thank you for the very important confidential work that you will be doing. Um, I, I think you've, you said it beautifully, Colin, that it may, it's not that it's a large number, but it's a significant number, and so this really matters to the people that it impacts, so, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome. Mr. Eldridge?
Uh, a-again, thank you for going through the, um, the Civic Leadership Academy and taking that as an opportunity to, uh, volunteer. I know Mr. O'Perre from youth football, when his child was going through that many years ago, so, um, I, I welcome his application.
You. And I would like of that. I will welcome you also, and I hope this is the first step of many things that you volunteer for in the town and
Alright.
continuing to learn about what we do and, and, and add to that.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Mr. Eldridge?
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board appoint Daniel O'Perre as a member of the Citizens Taxation Aid Committee effective immediately through June 30th, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It carries 500. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I have a copy of this?
You can.
It's all yours.
Keep it.
Have a great night.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, item 6A.
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to present the select board with the candidates for appointment for, to the 2026 Senior Tax Workoff Program. After being appointed tonight, the participants will be contacted with their supervisors and set a schedule that begins on January 5th. The applicants will be eligible for a property tax abatement of up to $1,500 if they complete 115 hours of work in their applicable department. We received 17 applications for the 2026 Senior Tax Workoff Program this year. For the upcoming year, the Board of Assessors approved 20, two new positions, giving priority to those with financial hardship. Of the applicants, one was new, and nine qualified for financial hardship priority. As there are three open slots, it is the position of the Board of Assessors that they will accept qualified applicants on a first-come, first-served basis with an anticipated deadline of February 1st, 2026. We will re-advertise in the bridge, at the Center for Active Living, and on our website. Additionally, the end date for the Recreation Department worker will be extended through December 6th in order to accommodate the department's busy season being through the spring and late autumn.
Open up to the board for any questions. Select person Coughlin?
No questions.
Cohane?
No questions. Great program, and, uh, glad we, we continue this and keep expanding it. And, uh, you know, I think, uh, select person Schneider had talked about, uh, you know, hopefully this, we would extend this into the schools at some point, and I don't see that this time, but, you know, I think we should send out another, uh, you know, reminder to them if they would like to also participate in this, would be, I think it would be fantastic.
Agreed. Thank you. Select person Gilfis?
I echo select person Cohane. I love this program. I think it's great that we offer it. I'm glad that we received the applications we did. It's almost a shame that we have three that are open. I wish that we had gotten, um, applications. I wish we were swimming in applications, but I think maybe that's just an outreach, uh, opportunity, and so I'm glad to see that we're going to re-advertise it in those spots. I hope that people sign up.
Thank you. Mr. Eldridge?
Just want to thank the Board of Assessors for the work that they do in this program. Love it. Um, nothing further to add.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would agree. I think both parties benefit greatly from this program.
Oh, yeah.
Both the, the, the folks that are doing the work and the departments that they're working for, so, um, let's keep this thing, this program growing and expand it as much as we can. Mr. Eldridge, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to. Mr. Chair, I move that the select board appoint the Senior Tax Workoff participants for fiscal year '27 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It carries 500. Thank you very much. And then item 6B, the 2026 Liquor License Renewal Approvals.
Mr. Chair, this evening, we are asking the board to renew the town's 29 on-premise and seven off-premise retail liquor licenses. These licenses are subject to annual renewal in the same way that the local licenses the board recently addressed are. Harley Farms and Tingsboro Sports Concession are seasonal licenses and therefore will renew in the spring. The total fees collected for these licenses was $88,750. All of these licenses are contingent on our tax office confirming tax compliance and the receipt of any missing documents or fees, and must be dated in the month of November.
Thank you. Once again, we'll open it up for some, any questions. Select person Coughlin?
Yeah, I noticed that one of them is in red, so that means that they have not paid yet, or they're not going up. I have never seen the application. Oh, okay, thank you.
Which one did you say? I'm sorry?
It was this one in red. I just wasn't sure what that meant. Thank you.
No questions. Select person Gilfis?
Um, a couple of questions. Could you just explain what the difference between the general on-prem and restaurant licenses are? I tried to make sense of it based on who had them, but I don't know that it made sense to me.
So, restaurant is obviously the food service, um, restaurants that we, we have here. General on-premise, I, I don't know if I'm going to explain this correctly. Maybe Colin, you can add to this, but if you have something that is like a, the brewery, those would be a general on-premise. It's just a distinction that the ABCC, um, provides for those facilities. So, I think you'll see probably modest routes is, uh, general on-premises.
Theirs is on-prem pouring,
Right.
which makes sense because they don't serve food, right?
They serve prepackaged food.
Okay. And then Epigram is general on-prem because they're a brewery. And then the Tingsboro Sports Concessions is general on-prem.
Again, that's a food truck.
And so is my mother's, though.
But it's like a food.
The, to Jackie's point, these are, um, it is a state, um, designation, so for either Jackie and I, who are rational people, to make sense of what the state did would be difficult. But, um, generally, generally, the ABCC classifies these based on their primary purpose. So, some are very clear. The Outback, for instance, is clearly a restaurant. In some municipalities, there are rules that govern, that are different based on the type of license. In Tingsboro's case, all alcohol licenses require some level of food. Jackie talked about this last time. That's why you have to have a common vic. We don't make a distinction between general on-premise and restaurant in the way that the state does. However, if you look at a city like Boston, even Lowell, they have different rules for your general on-premise. So, a great example in Lowell, the Blue Shamrock, which is a nightclub, that would be just a general on-premise. There'd be no food service requirement. It doesn't matter as much in Tingsboro, because we require that you serve food no matter what type of liquor license you have. So, it's not a good answer, just that the state provides this, I guess, um, separation so that you could have different regulations. It wouldn't make sense, for instance, for the city of Lowell to require that there be a full kitchen at the Blue Shamrock. If any of you have ever been to the Blue Shamrock, it is literally just a nightclub. It'd be weird for there to be a kitchen. I've never been. This is just what I've been told. But again, in our case, you have a policy that says that you have to have a common vic, so it doesn't matter for us. We charge the same fee. They go through the same process. They're subject to the same rules.
Perhaps when Sean returns, we'll, I'll have a deep dive with him.
He would love that.
Besides the Bahama Breeze and Farwell House, are there any others on this list that are not currently operating?
So, we do, we do have a couple. Um, the Tingsboro Sports Center, 501 Potash, um, they have not built out yet, um, so they are not currently o-operating. Town Spirits is another one that has not built out yet, so they are not currently operating.
Okay, cool.
So, it's those four.
And then my last question is, why does Vesper have two kinds and two locations?
Because they have one for their restaurant, um, at 185, and then they have one on the golf course
Oh, okay.
at 999, I believe it is, Island Road. Thank you.
910. It's, it's at the turn.
Obviously.
Mr. Eldridge, any questions?
No. My question was already asked by select person Gilfis, because I was just asking which ones were not active, and, um, I, I know about, um, are there any that have been not in use for, um, more than a couple of years, or more than one year? Because like, I mean, Bahama Bree-, uh, it's not, um, I, I think Bahama Breeze is one, but, uh, what about some of the other? I'm just, because we do have limited ones. I'm just trying to understand, are there some that are just sitting there?
Sure. So, the Farwell House, they applied for their application in June of 2016. I don't know if they ever opened. I don't believe they did. I know that in the last three years that I've been here, they have not opened. That license, just for your knowledge, is also a restricted license to the Kendall Road, Middlesex area. So, they do have a restriction on that license that's there. The Town Spirits, Inc., which was, um, to be built in the area that the, um, pet place is, um, on Technology Drive, that was issued in May of 2023. Um, I am currently working with the planning board to see where they are with that, but they have not started building as of yet.
Thank you. And then the only other question we always ask this one, how many open licenses do we have?
So, I, um, off the top of my head, I can't tell you on the beer and wine. We do have a couple beer and wine on-premise licenses that are open. We do have three open all-alcohol licenses at 440, um, that are restricted to that north of the bridge area. We have one available all-alcohol license, um, but we have had some inquiries into those, that all those licenses are in the process of being prepared. Uh, we have not received those as of yet, though.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that we're clear on the record. So, select person Coughlin pointed out Tremonti's in red. Your vote tonight will not be to, it, it's not to not renew, but when you renew the licenses, that one won't be renewed. Jackie has sent out numerous letters. We've called. She's done certified mail. The ABCC says that licenses have to be renewed annually, and the law, and it's the state, so I can't explain, it says that the renewal paperwork has to be signed in November. We are obviously now outside of November, having not received it. We would need to, if they do somehow, if they do send us one late, even if we can make it on your December 17th agenda, we have to figure out from the ABCC what we do since it wasn't signed in November. If, if nothing happens, that license will expire on December 31st, but it doesn't automatically go back into your, um, into our coffers, essentially. We'd have to do some work with the ABCC to get it back, but I just want to be clear, it's not for a lack of trying. We've gone above and beyond to try to get them to reach out. We also know they haven't renewed any of their health department licenses, nor have they applied for an annual inspection that's required by the building department, so I don't know what the future is there, but just to be totally transparent, your vote tonight will leave Tremonti un-renewed, simply because we don't have an application from them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, so that means that everyone except for Tremonti sent a fresh application this year to renew?
That's correct.
So, even though Farwell House applied in 2016, they keep renewing consciously, and they're, and they pay fees every time they do that?
Yes, they do.
That's their business, not mine. Okay. And then theoretically, Tremonti, if they haven't renewed this by the end of the year, what happens January 1st?
Hypothetically, they would need to, it would be treated as a new application. I say hypothetically only because, as I've said to this board before, the ABCC is incredibly pro-business. So, it's never really as cut and dry, but if you just take a clean read of their, of the law, as of December 31st at 11:59, their license would expire. They would cease operations. They couldn't sell alcohol on January 1st, and unless the ABCC intervened otherwise, we would have to treat them as a new application, go through the hearing process again, potentially at different conditions, et cetera, if they were to resubmit.
Are we the enforcers of things like that, and also like that Board of Health stuff that they need to do? Like, would we say January 1st, you guys are closed?
Yes, so if nothing happens, the Tingsboro Police Department on January 1st will go and remove the old license if they're open and put them on notice. They'll sign an affidavit saying they delivered it, saying that they can't serve. Technically, the state has enforcement authority as well, so if the state went there and they were serving alcohol without a license, however, it mess-
They would still operate, though, because their common vic is renewed.
No, they did not renew the common vic either, and they haven't got their food license. No, they did not renew the common vic either, and they haven't got their food license. The other thing is, in Massachusetts, it's not as simple as I made it sound. You're a copy, when Jackie mails out the new certificates, they take those, and they give a copy to the distributors, which are also incredibly regulated. So, once they no longer have a new license, they won't be able to get alcohol. So, I'm not suspecting that there's going to be some illegal sale there. But yes, we would notify them that their license expired, and if they wish to operate, they would have to apply for a new one, again, barring any intervention from the ABCC.
I look forward to hearing an update. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board approve the 2026 Liquor License Renewals as presented, contingent upon a final tax verification, and receipt of all required paperwork and fees, and dated in the month of November by the appropriate authorized individual.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 500. Very much. Okay, wow, we are at select board reports. Hard to believe we're going this quickly. Select person Cofflin, you want to lead us off?
Sure. I had the opportunity to head to Augusta's last week for their world-famous Chicken Bites. I understand the hype now. I had never heard of them until they, they were here a couple of months ago, and I was, I was very pleased. And I wished them continued success. I mean, the place was very crowded. I went by a couple more times, and the parking lot was full. I know it's around Christmas time, so, but I'm hoping that it's because of the draw for their, their food. And I wish continued success to anybody else who is opening in Tingsborough, and wish them well, so.
Thank you. Select person Cohane?
Nothing tonight.
Gilfis?
Just a quick one. The Board of Health has COVID tests available. I noticed that people are getting sick. 'Tis the season, coming off of Thanksgiving. I personally was around a lot of germs, so it would be a very smart idea to stop by the Board of Health and pick up your free COVID test, and test before you see family again for the next holidays.
Thank you. Select person Eldridge?
Yeah, last time, our last meeting, I had mentioned, I'd asked everybody to be patient during the holidays, and I was hopeful that everybody would get home for their, their carrots with hot honey, whole turkey stuffing. Now, we have our snow coming, and it's really important that everybody be cautious. There are parking restrictions. Allow the plows to do their work. If you don't need to be on the roads, don't be on the roads. People worry about, oh, the plow was doing this, and he was taking up the road. Yeah, he's plowing the road. Where do you expect him to be? So, please, it's that time of year, and also, because we are getting a bunch of snow, and I bet a lot of people are not prepared for it, and it's new, check in on your neighbors. They need some help shoveling, or snow blowing. It's a great community for that. I encourage everybody to go through and try to help each other out. It's, it is December 1st, and it does not feel like it should be snowing, but it will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a certain place where residents should get information about snow? About closures, or anything like that?
If there was a closure, it would be on the town's website. If it was like an emergency notification, our reverse 911, obviously. But yeah, if there's, if the schools close, an email goes out to the community, it'll be on the school's website. We typically share it as well. If there was a municipal closure, which I'm certainly not anticipating, it would be on the town's website.
Thank you, sir.
Or our digital message board, of course. Excuse me.
Of course.
But they hopefully are driving by.
Yeah, that's right.
Correct. That's a good point. You wouldn't be driving by it. But it'll be there anyway. It'll be there anyway.
Thank you, Colin.
And I will just give a reshout out to the Recreation Committee for the Festival of Trees. I was there this weekend, could not believe how many people we can squeeze into the town hall.
Wild.
But everybody was having a great time. The igloos are all filled with people, so the laser light shows were being packed in. So, thanks again to the, to the Recreation Committee and all the volunteers that helped with that. It was a, it's just a great reflection of the things that we do as a town. Okay. Mr. Eldridge?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board go into executive session, under exemption too, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief, and assistant fire chief.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. I am also in favor. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.